Mayor, we are ready to go.
Okay, do we have the background music resolved? Okay, I will call our meeting to order. It is 6:30 PM. Welcome to our Lakeville City Council meeting. It is December 7th. We will move right into a moment of silence and then we will say the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me for a moment of silence. Let's say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Miller, is Shar on? Could we do roll call?
She is.
Volk?
Here.
Wheeler?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Hellier?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Thank you very much. Next up is item number three, which is citizen comments. It's always a little awkward to do this when we're online, but we may have people that have called in or are with us in person. If you do have a citizen comment, please, when we get to the point, I will ask if there's anyone. We allow up to three minutes. Please state your name and address clearly for the record. If you are here for the public hearings, if you are here for the public hearing on the fee schedule or the budget, or if you're here for the errors department, agenda items, items seven, eight, or nine, I will take comments at that time. So you don't need to say those comments unless your time schedule would mean that you would need to at this point. Is there anyone that has a citizen comment this evening? Hearing no one, we will move on to item number four. Any additional information? Mr. Miller for our agenda this evening.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay, we'll move right into presentations. And this evening, we have our Police Department quarterly report from Chief Long. Welcome, Chief Long.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Council, Mayor. Thank you for letting us present our quarterly report. We're going to see how this works with Jim controlling our presentation. All right, next slide, please, Jim. I'm going to turn my video off while I do this. I think it'll be easier. In August, our seasonal CSOs began heading back to school. As many of you know, we hire seasonal CSOs in the summer to handle things such as working at the boat ramp and and park extra patrol and things of that sort. However, we had two openings, so two of the seasonal CSOs became part-time CSOs that will stay with us permanently. In August, we were involved in several commercial vehicle enforcement details on County Road 46. Lakeville partnered with the Dakota County Sheriff's Office, Rosemont PD, Apple Valley PD, and the State Patrol to enforce laws specific to commercial vehicles. We also had some new people join our SWAT team. After going in under an interview process and selection process, Officer Haley Hops, Joshua Flynn, and Tyler San Augustine were selected as our newest members of the South Metro SWAT team. We belong to a consortium with SWAT in which all members of the county minus Burnsville and Eagan are members of the SWAT team. Officer Hops and Officer Flynn will serve specifically as SWAT crisis negotiators. Next slide, please, Jim. In August, our school resource officers returned to their respective schools for the 2021 school year. You'll notice that we now have three. Officer Natalie Anderson is the Lakeville Middle Schools School Resource Officer, and that is new this school year. And she, like I said, she's taking care of the middle schools. People may ask what the SROs are doing now that the schools are on distant learning. They still stay very busy with many of the same issues that they work with with the schools during the regular school year, whether it's student issues, behavioral issues, students that are troubled, things of that sort. In September, our officers attended our annual use of force and firearms training. The training included rollout of our new TASER system. It replaces those that we had issued in 2004. And the new TASERS include an upgrade in technology and will pair with their body worn cameras when they're deployed. Next slide, please. It was a little bit different this year. Normally, we have a police and fire ball in early September in which we announce the Officer of the Year and Firefighter of the Year. This year, we're unable to do that. So we held a brief ceremony out in front of the Police Department, and Officer Casey King was recognized as the 2020 LPD Officer of the Year. Officer King grew up in Lakeville after starting his law enforcement career at an agency in the southwest part of Minnesota. He was hired by Lakeville PD in 2014. He's respected among his peers for the police work and excellence in which he represents Lakeville Police Department. He will be honored at next year's Police and Fire Ball, so we will actually have be presenting two Officers of the Year next year. September 30th marked the end of the Dakota County Traffic Safety Project's fiscal year. This grant supports traffic events in Dakota County jurisdictions. Due to COVID, much of the work was put on hold earlier in the year, but resumed in the summer and fall. The project allows us to target enforcement of DUIs, seatbelt, and distracted driving. Next slide, please. Our canines, tank, and kilo, along with their handlers, Officer Danielson and Loffler completed their annual certifications. The mental health team conducted 21 follow-up visits in October. An officer recently made a comment that we found very meaningful, and I'll repeat that. It said, after visiting a family, they said the parents are divorced and the daughter is struggling with anxiety, depression, and self-harm. Therapy options were given to the family. Both mom and daughter were extremely receptive and thankful for the new resource knowledge. This program continues to bring positive actions between Lakeville PD and the Lakeville citizens. Next slide, please. To obtain feedback from our residents, we have now added a comments section to our website. As time goes on, we expect to receive both positive and negative messages. Right out of the gate, our first comment recognized Officer Emily Bears for her excellent service. We interviewed a number of candidates for open reserve officer positions. Twelve candidates will begin the Reserve Academy in January. We're very excited to have them joining our department. Next slide, please. The pandemic has obviously had an effect on everybody, and for our department specifically, our lobby is closed for business except for issues that can't be completed online or by phone. We have limited staff in the office to reduce possible exposure. Masks are required outside of any personal workspace while you're in the building. Our patrol officers use PPE, or Personal Protective Equipment, and they spend limited time in the building and follow proper disinfectant procedures. The public has adopted very well to our procedures, and we continue to receive great community support. Next slide. Next slide. So far, we have responded to a little over 28,000 calls for service in January through October. As Jim brings up these next statistics, you'll see where we were as compared to last year. You'll notice the calls traditionally or typically are down. The mental health calls are up despite the overall call for service being down. And we've talked about that previously, but with everyone being at home, it has created additional stressors. We are getting additional calls for mental health. Next slide. Here's where we are for traffic stops and accident calls. Cliche, but traffic stops came to a screeching halt when COVID hit in order to prevent contact points and exposure points. During the summer, when COVID was down, we did start picking up a little bit with traffic enforcement. But now it's slowed back down unless there's egregious actions such as the DUIs and things of that sort. Property damage accidents are down, which would be consistent with traffic being down. Same thing with the personal injury accidents. Those are down also. Next slide. Here's a snapshot of some of the crimes that we have seen. DUI and aggravated assaults. With calls being down, if you look at the aggravated assault versus other assaults, they kind of even out. It does seem that those have been more prevalent with people staying at home. Look at the auto thefts, vandalism. Vandalism has been up. Again, that would be consistent with, as the old cliche goes, when people are bored, bad things can happen, and with kids being out of school, we've seen that with vandalism. Okay, next slide. This is an interesting statistic. In, for the year to this point, we've processed over 1,100 gun permits. And if you compare that to last year at this time, we had processed 452. Technically, that's a 264% increase, but it has been significant, and we continue to see a record pace of gun permits coming in. Next slide. These are just a snapshot to some of our neighboring cities to see where we're at. As you can tell, the majority of cities aren't doing traffic stops. That's the column in the red. And then calls are down for the other suburbs, too. And next slide. You would just page through this, Jim? This will just show you where we're compared to Eagan and Burnsville with calls. We're down, obviously, from where we were last year at this point, as we've discussed. This is just a snapshot of where the other cities are at. Okay, next slide. And we'll end it with this. Our mission statement, the Lakeville Police Department exists to ensure an excellent quality of life in Lakeville by serving and protecting its citizens in a professional and innovative way. That concludes our quarterly report, and I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Joshua?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for that report. I have two quick questions for you. One is, could you provide a couple examples of what commercial specific vehicle traffic enforcement on 46 is? What kind of violations were you looking for?
Sure. One of the most frequent complaints is Jake breaking. And we've had plenty of meetings with county and other cities that share that roadway, trying to figure out how we can address that. Right now, it's a very difficult thing to enforce, and we do not have an ordinance that is specific to that, nor do most suburbs. It's very rare that they do. But we also have what's called leaky loads, where rocks are flying out the back, pebbles breaking windshield and so forth, speeding, things of that sort, specific overweight, things that would be specific to trucking. So there's some few examples.
So even though we don't have an ordinance, you are still enforcing Jake breaking?
No, we're not enforcing Jake breaking, but that is one of the complaints that we frequently get out there. But we have been meeting with the county and our partners, trying to figure out a way to address that. It's, for those that are listening, it's a very difficult thing to enforce because some vehicles are now even designed to specifically Jake break. So that's designed right into the computer program on the trucks. So it's a very difficult thing to enforce. But with that said, if we can get people to follow the law, hopefully, we can spread the word about the Jake breaking, too.
Thank you. Second question is unrelated. Earlier this year, we were notified that one of our K-9 units were going to participate in a reality competition with COVID. Did that happen?
It did not happen. The show was put on hold, so it's still pending. It still is out there, but no, unfortunately, it got put on hold.
Gotcha. Bummer.
Thank you, Chief. Luke?
Yeah, no question. Just a comment. Make sure you share. The staff are grateful. I know this has been a tough year. I appreciate adapting all the different work environments and all your support of the community, so thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And your comments, questions? Chiefs, thank you very much. Good report.
Thank you.
Thanks. We'll move on to item, our next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Mr. Miller, anything you'd like to highlight?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. A few items of note. It is a rather lengthy consent agenda, and so I have a few extra items. Item 6E, the city clerk is recommending that the city council acknowledge receipt of the amended abstract of votes cast in the November 3rd election. This is an unusual action, but between the time when the city certified our results and the county certified the results to the state, there was a discrepancy found. It did not change the results of any of the races. But the city council is being recommended to acknowledge the receipt of that, just to clarify the record. Item 6G is proposed ordinance. This is in line with the work session discussion from your last meeting. If you remember, earlier in the year, the city council reduced liquor license fees by 20% to reflect the shutdown that occurred earlier in the year with these establishments. At that time, you also allowed for two payments of that, of the remaining fee. That second fee was set to be due on November 30th, and the council directed staff to create an ordinance that, in effect, waives that fee. And so when you combine those two together by math, that reduces the liquor license fees for most establishments at about 60% from what they would have paid normally. And that's just, again, an effort to recognize the pain that some of them are going through due to the shutdown due to COVID. Item 6H is a resolution accepting the donation of $5,800 from the Lakeville Public Safety Foundation. This is being made to the fire department so that they can, for specialized tools, Leatherman Raptor multi-tools that help them in their response to various events. And item 6J is also related to the fire department, but this is for the Fire Department Relief Association. This is basically their pension benefit. And this amendment to this will increase their benefit level to $10,000 per year of service, and that is the maximum that is allowed by state law. That will go into effect on January 1st. And then lastly, item 6X, as was also discussed at your work session, earlier this year, the council relaxed our policies and ordinances relating to customer service areas for outdoors, such as patios and outdoor sales areas for retail establishments. That policy was set to expire at the end of the year. Obviously, when we adopted that, we had no idea how long the pandemic was going to last. It's clearly going to last until next year. And so this is extending that until the local emergency is rescinded or another action by the city council is taken. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. And I should have mentioned before I asked you is that these consent agenda items are matters that we consider more routine in the business of the city, so thank you for those clarifications and highlights. Is there anyone in the audience or council, any comments, questions on any consent agenda items? Joshua?
Would like to make a motion to remove item 6D from the consent agenda, just for some quick discussion with the council.
Okay. Item 6D is the setting of the regular city council meeting dates. We will pull that item. Is there any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding item 6D?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Shar, roll call, please.
Volk?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Hellier?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Okay, the consent agenda passes excluding item 6D, which we will move to right now. Councilmember Lee, would you like to describe this further in terms of your thinking or questions you might have?
Sure. So last year, we considered this a change in our time from 7 to 6:30. And at that time, we were debating changing it to 6:00 PM. But one of the concerns was due to commute time from work. And so I guess I wanted to bring it up again for some quick discussion if we wanted to consider moving it earlier to 6:00, since telecommuting seems to be more prevalent. Commuting times are maybe not as much of an issue at the moment. And seeing if the council had any want to make it a little bit earlier, because I thought, I do think that there are nights where it would be helpful if the meeting started a little bit earlier, and it's helpful for staff in terms of their own personal plans and travel in between the workday and the council. So that's, I just wanted to bring it up in case anyone had thoughts or wanted to consider making that change.
Okay. Councilmember Hellier?
Yeah, thanks. I'm okay with that, as long as we think about reevaluating maybe mid-year at our retreat, only because if for some reason I start commuting to downtown, which I hope I don't ever do again, that would then, that could get in an issue for me, but I don't foresee commuting personally until June. I do like the earlier time, so, and I would like to be consistent between work session and regular meetings as well.
And thank you. Councilmember Volk?
The only thing I would caution us on in the fact that we're going to try to make this easier on us and staff, it's really, the meetings are also for the public, so I would caution us that by us bringing it to 6 o'clock because it works better for us doesn't necessarily mean it works better for the public. And so at this point, I'm comfortable at staying at 6:30.
I would just add my comment. Thank you. I would add my comment as well. I think I have a fair amount of flexibility from a time standpoint. So I'm pretty, you know, whatever we decide to do is fine, but I I do think from a public standpoint, it's really important that we're not moving our meeting times a lot. And I think that, I mean, just recently, in the last couple of months, we had one person that finally realized we had moved it to 6:30. And so I just, my hesitancy is for consistency. And unless there's a compelling reason that we should move to 6:00, I certainly would not want to reevaluate and change it in the middle of the year for the same reason. I think consistency for our, is really important for our constituency. So my preference would be to stay at 6:30, stay consistent with the work session, and continue to advance that forward. Once we get out of the pandemic, then if there is compelling reasons to move to a different place, then we need to, we certainly can consider that and look at that for the long-term future. But I do get concerned if I was working full-time and was commuting, 6:00 would be impossible. And I'm not doing that anymore, but I appreciate Luke's statement, and it's it's a bit of a challenge. So I think consistency for our public is good. I'd support just staying where we are. I don't know, Councilmember Wheeler, do you have a perspective?
I mean, it can go really late, since I'm not going to be on it anymore.
Thanks for your encouragement, Brian.
So I'll just say Burnsville does 5:30. So I don't, I mean, to me, 6:00 is not that out of the realm, so.
I think Burnsville-
Can we hold this over until we have our our new council in next year, or do we have to set it today?
I think we have the privilege to adjust the time of the meetings at any time we would want to. I do think it's helpful to establish the meeting dates so the public is aware of that, and then we would want to give ample notice, whatever we would view that to be, in terms of changing the meeting dates to not put an imposition on staff and ensure that the public understands what we're doing. If you do look at some comparable meeting times, I mean, they range from, Burnsville's the earliest at 5:30. The next earliest would be like Adina's at 6:00. Otherwise, everybody else is at 6:30, 7:00, or 7:30.
What time is the school-
For regular meetings.
Sorry.
I don't know what time the school board means. 6:00? Is it, Michelle, is it 6:00? Do you remember?
From what I remember, I think it was 7:00, and workshops had started earlier at 6:00, but regular meetings were at 7:00.
I feel like I've seen work sessions at 2:00 for the school board in the past, but.
If they call a special one, a lot of times, though, they'll pick a time that's whatever the topic is. But this is, you know, now this is two years ago, so I'm, you know, it's all old school for me now, so.
Yeah. Joshua? Joshua?
It doesn't sound like there is consensus, so I appreciate the thought to change, to hold this over until we have the new council form, too, so I think it's appropriate to approve the resolution as it stands and visit the time at a later date, so move to approve resolutions setting dates of regular city council meetings and work sessions in 2021.
Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Shar, roll call, please.
Wheeler? Anderson?
Aye.
Hellier?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Okay, our motion carries. And we will move on to item number seven, which is a public hearing on the adoption of a fee schedule by ordinance for 2021. And our Finance Director, Ms. Erickson, has joined us, and I will turn it over to her, just for those of you that are listening. We'll have a presentation. Pardon me. We'll have a presentation. This presentation's choking me up.
Wait, we get to the budget.
I can hardly wait. Just from an agenda standpoint, how this will flow is we will look at, we will have the staff report, and then we will open it up for council comments and questions, and then we will go to the audience for the public hearing. If there are any comments and questions, we will have a, we will close the public hearing, and then we'll have further conversation as a council and take any action as we desire. So we'll go to the staff report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members and members of the public. Just wanted to make some brief comments about the fee schedule. This is an annual process that we go through to adopt any changes to the fee schedule. We publish our fee schedule online. It's always available, and so when we make changes to it, we do go through this process to make the changes. And we've had a number of discussions at work sessions, most recently the November 23rd and the October 26th. Most of the additional discussion was around the utility rates. But I will also mention that some of the other changes, I'll just highlight just a few of them. The park dedication fee, we are proposing a 5% increase, and that is based on a model that was put into place a number of years ago that is directly related to the change in market value for some unplanted properties. And so in a year that if potentially there was a decrease in market value, then that park dedication fee would also decrease. So this year, it is a 5% increase. For utility rates, there were no change in the streetlight rates. The environmental resource fee for environmental enforcement- The environmental resource fee for environmental enforcement programs, it's about a thirty-three cent increase per quarter. For sewer, there was an increase in the base as well as the usage, going from nine fifty-nine to ten seventeen per quarter. And then the usage per thousand gallons of discharge going from four point seven five dollars to five dollars and four cents. On the utility and the water side, there was considerable discussion, as I mentioned. We presented a number of different scenarios and using our utility rate model, which projects out ten years for cash balances. And those cash balances are in place to provide minimum cash to cover debt service, operations, three months of operations, next year's capital, and then also to have some available in reserve for emergencies. Now, we've been striving to move towards a position of not having to issue debt for our capital projects and instead having cash on hand to be, to have a pay-as-you-go process to pay for capital, but we are still a couple of years out on that. And utility rates, as I mentioned, we looked at a number of scenarios, some involving a straight percentage, the same percentage for the base fee as well as all three tiers. And then we, the council settled at their last workshop to consider changes in the base and the tiers at different rates. So a lower rate for tier one as compared to tier two and tier three. And so those rate changes, the base fee would increase by a dollar thirty-four per quarter. Tier one would go up twenty-three cents per thousand gallons, and that's for usage up to thirty thousand gallons. Tier two would increase by fifty-three cents per thousand gallons, and that's for consumption between thirty and forty-nine thousand gallons. You remember that your first thirty thousand gallons are at tier one cost? And then any consumption between thirty and forty-nine would then be charged at the tier two cost. And then tier three would go up one dollar and nine cents per thousand gallons. And this is for any consumption over forty-nine thousand gallons. The impact on the average users, we did provide a number of different scenarios too because there can be some variation from one user to the next. And so an average user using about fifteen thousand gallons per quarter would see about a ten dollar and five cent increase in the quarterly bill. An average user of about thirty-four thousand gallons per quarter would see about a sixteen dollar increase per quarter. And then a higher user using about ninety-four thousand gallons per quarter, and this would be somebody that is irrigating their lawn essentially every other day, would see an increase of about seventy-three dollars per quarter. So one other item I wanted to mention related to utility rates is in regard to the senior discount program. The council did express a desire to have more discussion about the senior discount program as well as additional discussion on the base and the tier rates going forward. And, and staff is recommending that we look at doing a more comprehensive utility study that does look at the base and tiers and how they're set up and if there should be any changes associated with them sometime during 2021. So in preparation for that, regarding the senior discount program, the staff did propose that the council consider a moratorium starting or effective January first, 2021. So there would not be any new enrollments allowed for this program until the council will decide what they want to do with that program. One other item I, I want to mention also is regarding the communication. I know during 2020, it was a high usage year for many utility customers. And we did receive quite a few phone calls about utility bills due to high consumption. And there was also a significant rate increase in 2020 that staff has looked at additional communication efforts to communicate and educate the public on the impact of their usage. And so we've put information in the focus, the newspaper, information online regarding this meeting and other changes in the utility rates, using social media to communicate the information, and then also putting some additional language on the bills, recognizing that there is very limited space on the bills to be able to put a message. But we did squeeze one in there to let them know that there will be rate increases effective for 2021. And we will look at any opportunities that we can to provide additional information to the public in advance of them receiving their first bills in the summer, which is, it can be shocking if they're not aware that there is a rate increase or that the impact of high consumption can have on their bills. So we will make every effort to communicate better and more information to the public regarding the utility rates. That all. Sit for any questions.
And council, any questions at this time? I did have one, Ms. Erickson. Could you comment just quickly on, on the comparability of our water rates with other communities?
Yes, I don't have specific information regarding rates in other cities. I guess we did include that in a previous workshop agenda. I don't have that in front of me at the moment, but I will say that there can be some definite comparisons with other cities in providing the services. But it is important to note that cities may be at different stages regarding how they are paying for the infrastructure. It might be that they have to issue debt like we are and other cities are not issuing debt. And depending on, so the, the costs can vary from city to city. So while it's, it's nice to compare with other cities, it is important to look at what our goals are for our financial metrics and what services that we are providing, that they could vary slightly.
Thank you for that. I do recall that there was information in a prior agenda packet as well. And, and it seemed to me that, I guess my, my perspective that I gained, I guess from my perspective that I gained from that was that we were pretty competitive. It's not like our prices were like really, really, really high or anything.
Right, right.
Okay. Other questions, comments at this time? Otherwise, we'll go to the audience for the public hearing. Okay, seeing no other questions, is there anyone in the audience that has a comment regarding, as part of this public hearing on this matter? If so, we follow the same rules as citizens' comments. So if you are going to make a comment, please state your name and your address. If you desire to make a comment, is there anyone that has a comment?
Yes, I have a comment.
Thank you. Please speak.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Jonathan Rice, one six, three, three, six, Durango Trail. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, please go ahead.
Okay, I'm a new resident, two years in Lakeville. I had thirty-four years in Apple Valley. And I am sixty-four years old. And I pay my water bill online. I saw the senior discount. I thought, oh, that's, that's cool. And so I, I turned sixty-five in February. And just looking at my screen and makeup of the council, I think maybe, maybe Mayor Anderson might be the only one that's sixty-five. But I, I'd like to oppose the moratorium and just go with a little history. City Incorporated in nineteen sixty-seven, Mayor Ed Mako nineteen seventy-six, resolution number seventy-six thirty-six, I think he was forty-four years old. Institute it, I think was the first thing I could find on the microfiche about the senior discount. And that was approved every year, like you said, the, the senior tier for twenty-two years. And then in nineteen ninety-eight, it was looked at, there was two working sessions on it. And they modified it because there were, I think, some abuses with people getting a discount and doing a lot of irrigation on it. Now it's been twenty-two years to the day, actually, December seventh of nineteen ninety-eight. And so I think, and again, it's been approved every year since then. I read the comments from the staff comparing to other cities. And I really don't like some comparisons to other cities. I had thirty-four years in Apple Valley. They do their streets a little bit differently than Lakeville. I didn't see any bill at all when, when they did our streets there. But I, they were also talking about the, the rest of the citizens of Lakeville subsid, or, uh, helping, or subsidizing, that the seniors are getting subsidized. And I don't think that should be correct. I mean, this is a program for forty-four years and it's actually like a rate tier. And I think I, I tried to look back and see what Mayor Ed Mako or Mako was thinking back then. I think it was because seniors are on fixed incomes. And as I was growing up, I'm, I'm sixty-four right now. I'm not in the program right now. But I, but when I paid my bills the last two years, I didn't think that I was subsidizing any seniors. I thought, hey, that's pretty cool. Lakeville values their seniors. And so I just want you to, to consider that when you're looking at this moratorium. And I think, I mean, I don't know what you should do on this, but I mean, to allow some people that are in it right now to continue and then other people that could qualify, you're not letting in the program. And then from the staff, there were four hundred and eighty-three seniors that were prior to nineteen ninety-eight. Well, these four hundred and eighty-three seniors are now eighty-seven years old, if my math is right. And so God bless them if they're living in their house and they, they can pay their, their, you know, and they're, they're doing great at eighty-seven. But some of these four hundred and eighty-three are going to fall off, some more people are going to come on. But it's, if you look at my water bill, it's about a hundred and thirty dollars every quarter. The discount's not going to do much, but if the discount, I would take that money, put it back into the community. So I just wanted you to look at that. There's been multiple mayors, multiple councils that have looked at this senior discount and then have, and then approved it. So I just want you to take a good look at that and the moratorium also. I, I don't know if you, I mean, like I said, I don't know what's fair, how fair it is to stop the program. I don't know if the mayor's on the program right now. Could be sixty-five. But I just wanted to put my input in there. So I just wanted to let you know that seniors do provide value to the city. And I want you to reconsider this moratorium. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. I appreciate your comment. Is there any other comments? Okay, hearing no other comments. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
We'll move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Shaw, roll call, please.
Anderson.
Aye.
Hellier.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed. Is there any comments regarding this gentleman's comments in the public hearing or any other questions regarding any of the fees? We've invested a fair amount of time going through a lot of this in work sessions and appreciate staff's support and help as we've asked questions and worked through things. Other comments and questions at this point? Councilmember Volk.
So I would like to thank the gentleman for coming forward and sharing his comments with us. The moratorium in my mind is just so that we can take a, a more in-depth look at that program and a few others as we talk about, you know, what we can do for our seniors, et cetera. And, and at this time, there is no qualification except by age. So, you know, those are some of the things that we'd like to discuss. And, you know, we, we're kind of under a timetable to be able to have action on this this evening. But we'll be discussing, you know, the seniors program and then, you know, water, et cetera, more in-depth as we go along throughout the year, whenever it comes up on a work session. So I'm hoping that this gentleman will stay engaged with us through those conversations when we get to workshop. But, you know, it would be wonderful for him to come back forward again and any other persons of the community to give us input on water rates and then on the senior program. So thank you.
Thank you. Well said, Michelle. Other comments, questions? Luke.
Thank you. I was, Councilwoman Volk, you very eloquently said what I was going to say, probably very not eloquently. So thank you for saying that. And just to repeat what we've said on previous work sessions, I'm happy to support kind of new structure that incentivizes people to be responsible with their water use. So, and then at the same time, get us a position where we are not borrowing to continue our long-term infrastructure for utilities.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee, did you have a comment?
Just to add to that, I appreciate staff's ability to come back to provide alternatives and then alternatives to the alternatives when it came to these fee structures. And one of the things that I appreciate about the priority in, in these rates is that the essential water and providing lower increases for those lower tiers. I, I think that is one of the values that was initially created for the senior discount, was that essential level of water. And if we can apply that philosophy and value to that first tier in terms of increases, I think that actually benefits not only the seniors on fixed incomes, but other residents that are, are, are needing that water and that fixed, or on fixed incomes as well. So thank you, Mr. Rice, for bringing up your point and for coming to the meeting. And thank you to staff for, for all the work on this as well.
Great, thank you. Is there any additional information that, or questions that any council member has or, or is there a motion?
Mayor.
Yes.
Move to approve the ordinance adopting fees and summary publications of ordinance. And two, move to approve the resolution adopting the fee schedule.
Second. There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Shaw, roll call, please.
Hellier.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Geraldine, and your entire team for the work on this. And we'll move to our next agenda item, so don't go anywhere. We'll go to the public hearing on our 2021 budget and tax levy. And again, same type of structure for those listening. In terms of how this works, there'll be a staff presentation. Then we'll, we as a council will participate in any dialogue questions and then we'll move to public comment. And then we close the public hearing and then we'll have additional opportunity for comments and questions with staff. So please, Ms. Erickson.
Okay, thank you again. I do have a number of slides I'd like to share with you, providing some information about the tax levy and the budget for 2021. And I do have Jim or Tim online. They're going to manage the slides. So if you want to, you are on the next slide. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to all of the department directors and supervisors and staff, as well as Administrator Miller and the finance staff for all the time and effort they put into preparing this budget. As you know, we start back in May with the budget and the capital improvement program. And now it is December, so it is a good six months that we're working on this document and fine tuning it along the way based on feedback from the council, feedback from departments and Administrator Miller. So it's, it's a long process, but here we are tonight to present it to you. So thank you to everybody that was involved, including the council members, for all of their time reviewing, discussing, and certainly providing thoughtful feedback on the documents. Next slide. So the 2021 tax levy is about thirty-four million for all funds. It essentially is a five point eight seven percent increase from. from the twenty-twenty levy, is about one-point-nine million-dollar increase. And it provides funding for operations, capital, maintenance, and debt service. Next slide. This slide shows the breakdown of that thirty-four million. So the majority of it is going to the general fund, about twenty-four million. Um, we continue to fund the pavement management fund, about one-point-one million. Equipment fund is a hundred fifty thousand. Now, this is a five-hundred-twenty-five-thousand-dollar reduction from twenty-twenty, whereas we are using, um, five-hundred-twenty-five-thousand dollars of general fund reserves to make up that difference. About three-hundred-fifty thousand is going into the park improvement fund. That fund is going to experience, um, some significant increases in expenditures associated with parking lot repairs. And so the difference, um, and that was needed in tax levy is going to be funded by the general fund reserves for twenty-twenty-one. And then we'll have further discussion about, there's also a need in twenty-twenty-two for the park improvement fund. And then it should balance out going forward that the tax levy should be, um, sufficient to provide the funding. And then the trail improvement fund, about eighty thousand. In future years, we'll see a significant increase in that fund as well. Debt service, um, almost eight million for the debt service associated with issuing, uh, bonds for street reconstruction for, uh, a number of our facilities and so forth. So about thirty-four million dollars for the twenty-twenty-one tax levy. Next slide, please. So community growth in, for twenty-twenty-one, uh, from new construction is about two-hundred-twenty-two million. This is about a two-point-seven-four percent increase. Um, this will generate about eight-hundred-eighty-one thousand in property taxes. So roughly two-point-seven-five percent of the twenty-twenty property tax levy. Now, I do wanna say that this is not additional tax levy, that this new construction is, is, uh, will generate. It's just that they will pay for about eight-hundred-eighty-one thousand of the tax levy that the council will adopt. Next slide. I have a few charts showing, um, the history of the market value from new construction to give you some perspective. So in twenty-twenty-one, as I mentioned, it's about two-hundred-twenty-two million. Um, in twenty-twenty, um, we also experienced about two-hundred-twenty-two million in growth as well. And you can see it went down, uh, to a low point in about twenty-twelve, but has been steadily rising essentially each year since twenty-twelve. Next slide. This chart shows the breakdown of the growth that we've experienced. So that two-hundred-twenty-two million, as you can see in, in all of the years, essentially, that residential comprises the majority of the growth. It's pretty significant. And then in a few years, you'll see some, um, increases due to growth in apartments and so forth. But the majority of it is residential growth. Next slide. And definitely, the growth has an impact on the tax capacity rate that is charged, that is used to charge the taxes to all the property owners. Um, with the significant of growth in the community and depending on what the tax levy, the change in the tax levy, we have seen a reduction in the tax capacity rate since twenty-thirteen. Now, the estimate for twenty-twenty-one is about thirty-point-three-four-two. And so that's a decrease even since twenty-twenty. So a decrease since twenty-thirteen and lower than even twenty-ten. Next slide. So the impact on the median valued home, which is valued at three-hundred-thirty-nine thousand, is about a thirty-five-dollar increase. So that increase of about one-point-eight, one-point-nine million in tax levy, um, equates to about a thirty-five-dollar increase in the taxes, this, just the city portion for a median valued home. Now, for our property, a one-million-dollar commercial property, the aggregate of commercial properties increased by about five-point-eight percent. So the impact on a commercial property will be about three-hundred-seventeen thousand dollars, excuse me, three-hundred-seventeen-dollar increase. Thank you. I have a couple of charts showing, uh, breakdown of the revenues and the expenditures and so forth for the general fund. So the general fund provides, uh, many services related to parks and recreation, police and fire, um, inspections and so forth. So the revenues in the general fund are about thirty-three million. The majority of it is, uh, from property taxes, about twenty-four million, and, um, other licenses and permits and intergovernmental, uh, revenues. Now, I will say that we're very conservative in the area of permits, as we've discussed at the workshops, that we, uh, plan for about three-hundred-fifty single-family permits. This year, we're seeing a significant increase. I believe we were at about five-hundred-seventy-nine at the end of November. And, um, but from a budget perspective, we tend to be very conservative so that we aren't reliant on that permit revenue. Next slide. We are using about one-point-four million in general fund reserves. About eight-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars will be transferred to the equipment fund. Two-hundred-fifty thousand will be transferred to the park improvement fund. Two-hundred thousand to the technology fund, which was established a few years ago. And it is our intention that this will be funded by tax levy, um, in the future instead of general fund reserve transfers. And then about a hundred thousand for inspections. So using, um, twenty-twenty revenues to fund a portion of the inspection department, uh, service expenses. So about one-point-four million of general fund reserves. Next slide. This slide shows the impact on the general fund ratio. The city has a financial policy that, um, we strive to have a fund balance ratio between forty and fifty percent. And for projected year-end twenty-twenty, we are actually projecting at about seventy-one percent fund balance. Um, I will say that, uh, about twelve percent of that is due to CARES Act funding that we received for COVID-related expenses. And, um, the reason that that is sitting in the fund balance is in part due to, we will be going through a single audit. And until we get the final sign-off on that single audit as to eligible expenses that we use the CARES fund for, um, uh, we will leave it in the fund balance. In the general fund, about three-point-eight. There is also other funds used in a small business grant program and utility funds and so forth. This is just the general fund share of that grant that we have received. The projected fund balance at the end of twenty-twenty-one is roughly sixty-three percent. So a little bit higher than the forty to fifty percent, um, that's currently in our fund balance policy. I will say that we, uh, there has been some discussion with the council and, and certainly with the finance committee about, um, should we be considering a higher level or a higher threshold? Maybe fifty to sixty percent? We'll be coming back to the council with that uh, for the purposes of having funds set aside due to the growth and to manage the growth and the pressures on the property tax levy in years to come. One other point I wanted to make on this chart was that for each one percent change in the fund balance would require about a three-hundred-twenty-thousand-dollar increase. It's about, we look at the next year's expenses, which is about thirty-two million. So one percent of that would be three-hundred-twenty thousand. Okay. This chart shows the expenses by function. Again, thirty-three million in the general fund, the majority of which is for public safety, about fifteen million. And that is comprised of, police is about twelve-point-nine million and fires about two-point-three million. And then other areas, um, general government as well as public works or streets division and so forth, so providing about five-point-three million and six-point-eight million for those two departments or two functional areas. And the next slide. Just to note that for twenty-twenty-one in the general fund, as well as all of the utility funds, there are no new positions that are proposed in any of those funds. In the utility funds, um, so the budget that is before you tonight includes all of our funds, not only the general fund, but any special revenue funds, debt service funds, and utility funds and so forth. Within the utility funds, um, it does include expenses for the twenty-twenty-one street reconstruction project, ongoing major maintenance projects. And they do reflect rate adjustments that you just approved in the last council item. And next slide. The liquor fund provides a significant amount of funding, uh, for city services, about one-point-one million. They provide about four-hundred thousand for debt service for the police station. Five-hundred thousand goes into the equipment fund, which would otherwise be supported by a general tax levy. About a hundred fifty thousand is transferred to the general fund to provide their share of administrative costs, technology costs, and so forth. Twenty-two thousand going into the technology fund for the technology equipment replacement. Fifteen thousand for the general fund for fireworks and about fifty-one hundred for the environmental resources fund for the drop-off vapor hazardous, hazardous waste. Next slide. Just wanted to point out, I know this question comes up every year. What factors really impact the property taxes as we're talking about already growth in the community and so forth? But I just wanted to call to your attention, as well as the public, there's a number of factors that do impact your property tax calculation. And this is not only for the city calculation, but also, um, county and so forth. So first of all, changes to the tax levy. As we're looking at the tax levy tonight, we're considering a five-point-eight-seven percent increase. Um, on the surface, that would generate an increase in your property tax levy or your property tax payment. The second area would be changes to the market value of your property. The assessors division of Dakota County, they value their properties. And, um, they, the value as of January second of this year will be the basis for your property tax bill in twenty-twenty-one. And the assessors division, they're looking at property sales between October of twenty-eighteen through September of twenty-nineteen. Or if there's any change in your property such that you had an empty lot and then you built a home on it, you'll see a significant increase in your valuation. As I mentioned earlier, the median valued home increased by three-point-nine-two percent. So changes to your market value of your property, um, impact your property tax bill. Changes to the market value for the city also impact your property tax bill. Um, as I mentioned before, new construction added about two-point-seven-four percent to the base. Um, valuation of existing properties increased about three-point-nine-four percent. So we saw almost six-point-seven percent increase in the total estimated market value in, for the city. And then there, of course, there's legislative changes to the property classification rates or stated formulas uh, for properties that are valued under four-hundred-thirteen thousand dollars. You receive a market value exclusion. There's a portion of your value that, um, is subtracted from the calculation such that you are not paying tax on a certain portion. Um, as your value increases from about seventy-six thousand up to the four-hundred-thirteen thousand, that credit or reduction is reduced such that at four-hundred-thirteen thousand, you don't have any more ex, uh, valuation that exists, is excluded from calculating the property taxes. So a number of these pieces, um, if you looked at just one by itself, you might say that you would not have a property tax increase. So if your property increased about, um, three-point-nine percent and the city's property tax increased overall three-point-nine percent, your share of that property tax pie, I'll call it, didn't change. You're still paying about the same prorated amount. And you would not see an increase, even though your property valuation increased. So it's dependent on the other factors that are in play. The tax levy, your valuation change, the city market valuation change, and any legislative changes that impact your calculation. So I hope that is helpful in explaining some of the changes that impact the individual property, why some properties will see increases in their tax levy or in their, um, property tax bill as compared to others. With that, I will, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Geraldine. Counsel, any questions at this time? I'm not seeing any, so we'll go to the audience. Is there any com- this is a public hearing. Um, again, we follow the same rules as citizen comments. If you have a comment, please state your name and address. Please state your name and address clearly for the record and, uh, when I call on you. And is there anyone, um, that has a comment regarding our budget for twenty-twenty-one and tax levy? I am not hearing anyone. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second.
There is a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. Shar roll call, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Halyer.
Aye.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed. Uh, counsel, we have, uh, again, on this matter, have had a lot of conversation over the last few months. Um, and thank you to staff for the good work in responding to our questions and comments and scenario building. Um, is there any further questions, comments this evening? Lu- Luke.
Yeah, thank you. Just wanna express my thanks, Geraldine, to you and your staff for putting this together and all the directors and everything. And, uh, appreciate the work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Ms. Erickson, I just wanted to say I'm really pleased with where the budget and the, uh, the increase landed at this point. Um, and I think it puts us in a really good position for twenty-one, um, or at least, um, a, a position that will allow us to wade through some of that uncertainty that twenty-one has for us. So, um, thank you for putting all of those factors into play when presenting this, uh, finalized version, so.
And I would just, I would just add to that, that I appreciate that you mentioned the finance committee. I, I do think that several of the finance committee members attended some of our meetings. Um, and I appreciate their work as, uh, I think it's helpful for our, our constituency to know that they've been doing some work considering long-term planning. Um, and we're not talking like two years. We're talking a lot longer. And I think that's something that's really important for us as we consider the city, um, over the next ten to twenty years being built out. And it, it does impact the, we move from a growth financial model to a stable financial model. And we're starting now to start to think about ways that we need to adjust things, like our water rates, um, to begin to accommodate, um, looking toward the future. And the finance committee's been very helpful to encourage and to motivate us as a council to consider some of those things. Maybe you, as well as staff, to consider some things. And I'm gratefully, greatly appreciative of their work. As far as the fund balance, they, I think you might have mentioned this. I'll just repeat it, that they, um, for this more uncertain time, they had a sense that we should be in the range of fifty to sixty percent. So if we do, um, extract out the CARES Act money, we're at the upper end of that range, which, which, uh, um, I think is a good place to be right now. And that, that moves back into what councilmember Lee's comments were. So, thank you very much. Any further comments or questions? I am not seeing any. So is there, uh, a motion, uh, to approve the property tax levy and budget?
Mayor.
Yes.
Okay. Um, mo- uh, move to approve four resolutions. One, adopting the twenty-twenty-one property tax levy. Two, adopting the twenty-twenty-one budget. Three, committing general fund balance for specific purposes. And four, granting budget amendment authority.
Second. Okay, there is a second? Okay, there is a second by council member Lee. Any further discussion? Shar will call, please.
Volk.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Hellier.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion carries, and again, thanks for the good work, Geraldine, by you and your team and the whole leadership team. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item, we'll move on to item number nine, which is a continuation of an item from a couple of weeks, our meeting a couple of weeks ago on the Eris Apartments. And I'm not sure how this is, who would like to speak first, but I'm going to go to Mr. Maury if there's a quick update in terms of the questions we raised at our last council meeting. Are you going to provide a brief overview of the actions that have been taken in this new recommendation, or is Mr. Knutson?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Knutson would like to speak first, and then I will follow him with the summary of what's transpired since the November 16th meeting.
Okay, sounds great. Welcome, Matt Knutson. I think you're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, all right. All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. I guess first, things first, I just want to, I want to reach out and say thank you to Mr. Maury and his team and staff, and to Mr. Jordan. It's been a, it's been a long journey, and appreciate the, the support that we've gotten from staff and the feedback and the, and the cooperation. In terms of where we're at today versus the last meeting, I guess the big, the big takeaway is, you know, after the meeting, there's a lot of discussion about the, the traffic and the, the in and out of Kenrick and 173rd. So we are, we have proposed, it's in your packet, I think, tonight, where the development team, as part of our cost, will, will introduce, will, will install that deceleration lane on Kenrick, and then the, the right turn lane onto 173rd, as well as partial widening of 173rd to allow for a left out and a right out onto Kenrick. So, you know, we feel that it's going to be a, that's an added benefits wall to the, to the neighborhood, to the city in general, as well as our, our project. So we, we heard that, and we, we're taking that into consideration and adding that to our, to our development. So that was our big, our big change from last, from last meeting. And, you know, with that, we look forward to discussion if needed tonight. I'm here to answer questions and look for the, your favorable vote tonight.
Thank you very much. Mr. Maury, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yes, Mayor, I would if I could. I am going to try to share my screen, and hopefully this will work out. You see my screen share? No, no screen share?
It's, it's coming.
Just give it a minute, Daryl, it's, it's thinking.
A little slow, okay. I don't, I don't have a lot of slides that I need to share this evening. Really, the only significant plan change that we received from the November 16th meeting, as Mr. Knutson said, was regarding the improvements that the developer will be installing at the Kenrick Avenue and 173rd Street intersection. Again, this item was tabled at the November 16th meeting. There was a lot of additional public input and city council discussion, and the city council directed staff to take a look at a number of items. The first item was the turn lane improvements at Kenrick and 173rd intersection. And if my screen share is not showing up, then I would ask Tim and Jim if they could jump in and maybe do that manually for me, because I would like to show that slide if we could on the screen.
It's there, Daryl.
Name back.
Your screen was up.
I, I, I never got it. I don't have anything now.
Our, our cable staff, our cable staff is going to do it, so just give it a second.
Well, I will, I will keep talking through this, and hopefully we'll get the screen share. If you go to third slide.
Can everybody see it now?
Now I got it. Yep, I have it.
Okay.
One slide, Jim. Oh, that's not it, okay. Um, technical difficulties. The, I'll just talk through this, I'm sorry. The developers agreed to construct these improvements, and what they consist of is a northbound right turn lane from Kenrick to 173rd Street, and the widening of 173rd Street at the intersection with Kenrick Avenue to be able to provide an exclusive right turn lane, an exclusive left turn lane, and then a eastern end lane into the subject site. So these improvements were shown on a plan that was submitted and included in your packet labeled the Kenrick Avenue Turn Lane Improvements. The developer has estimated those construction costs to be $121,000. They are included in the development contract as a line, line item under the security along with the sidewalk on the east side of Kenrick that the developer had previously agreed to, to do. So those improvements, the, the turn lane improvements and the sidewalk improvements are based on feedback that was received at the planning commission meeting in October and the city council meeting on November 16th. This should help with the congestion at that intersection and also help improve site visibility. Another item the city council directed staff to work on was the buffer yard landscaping warranty. Normally, we require a one-year warranty. City council requested that that be extended to two years. The development contract has been revised to include a two-year warranty on the landscaping that's going to be installed with this development. And we also went a step further, and the maintenance of the saved evergreen trees that are in the buffer yard at the east end of the site, that landscaping maintenance that's been recommended by the city forester has also been included to two years to match the landscaping warranty. So the developer has agreed to both of those additional items. Another item the city council directed at was looking at the pool hours, and a suggestion was made to limit the pool hours to close at 8:00 PM. In discussions with the developer, they would agree, excuse me, agreed to restrict the pool hours from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Now, this is less than the, what we use kind of as a standard in our nuisance ordinance, which the quiet time is between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. So those hours are reduced from what we would have in our city code related to the nuisance ordinance. The developer has also agreed to increase the height of the privacy fence on the east side of the pool from six feet to eight feet to provide additional buffering and sound attenuation for the pool area to the residential neighborhood to the east. Now, both of those items are included in the revised conditional use permit form that were included in the packet materials. A couple of other areas that were suggested by the city council, one was to realign the access for this site through the Mills Fleet Farm Store parking lot, or if that's not possible to require the underground parking be included in apartment rent. The developer, this, this discussions with Fleet Farm, and just so you know, if you remember from the November 16th meeting, the Fleet Farm Store is owned by a different entity than the property, the subject property, which is what the developer is purchasing this land to construct the apartment on. And they were not able to reach an amicable agreement for access through the Fleet Farm Store parking lot. And if you heard at the November 16th meeting, they do not favor including the underground parking in the apartment rent. Now, our ordinance does not require either of those items be part of this process. The site abuts a public street, it is allowed access off of the public street, and the site accesses that are proposed do meet our ordinance requirements for spacing on the public street and from the intersection. And also, the site does meet the off-street parking requirements of the M1 district. I do want to say in conclusion that this developer has been very cooperative from the beginning of this process. They've made a number of changes to their plans to address concerns that have been raised by the neighbors, that have been raised by the planning commission, and also by the city council. And staff is recommending approval of the resolution approving the Eris Apartments preliminary final plat. The resolution vacuums public easements in right of way. The resolution establishing no parking on both sides of 173rd Street, and then the conditional use permit to allow multifamily use with the building height greater than 48 feet in the M1 district, and adoption of the fines effect for approval as presented. And I can answer questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Maury. Counsel, any comments, questions to start off? Counsel member Hellier.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Daryl. I do want to just say I appreciate the developers, you know, coming to terms with some changes on the project. I think that's probably appreciated and makes it a better project. I think two things I'm concerned with, and it just, we're not really addressed, it doesn't do enough to protect the green space between the current neighborhood and what's being proposed. And the other, I'm still not convinced that these increased trips coming from the south are not going to cause issues, especially with the roundabout and the businesses there, and then also the interaction where our fire station is. So I still have those concerns. I don't think that those have been met, but I want to hear what other people in the council say, and then I'm assuming that there's people that are on for public comment as well.
Yeah, we'll have our discussion here as a council first, then I will go to the public in a little bit here. Other council members, questions, comments at this time before I go to the public? I will just add as well, my thanks, Mr. Knutson, and to the whole development team that, I appreciate your willingness to respond to the questions that were raised at the last meeting. I mean, for me, I think that we've adequately responded to the concerns. I appreciate the, the going above and beyond on the number of matters in terms of the buffer zone. It is a change, however, and change, change brings some loss, the loss of the woods, and I get that. But I think that what, what you folks have done with this development is responsive to the questions that arose. And we've been having conversations about this for a couple of years, and it's been adjusted and tweaked, and, and there's been a lot of conversation and, and agreements over the year, a couple of years. So I appreciate that, I appreciate staff's hard work as well. One of the questions that came up to me was a question that was more future-oriented regarding the future intersection at Highway 50 and, and the interstate, and there is some, some concept drawings out there that, that are under discussion regarding how roads might be adjusted, et cetera, and it's, I would just encourage people to stay involved in the discussion process. The county is working on a, Mr. Miller, what is it called, a scoping plan? Right now, for that intersection, and we are years away from that work being done, and we have plenty of ample opportunity to continue to discuss and consider the best ways for traffic to flow coming in and off the interstate and how it might impact the traffic up to the park and ride, et cetera. So I'm, I'm, I, I would, I would love to hear from the public if, if they are on here. Counsel, is there any further, any questions at this time, comments at this time, or I will go to the public? Okay, I'm not hearing any other questions. So at this time, again, we, this is not a public hearing, but we will allow for public comment, and, and we handle it just like citizen comments, maximum three minutes. It'd be great if you have new information or a new thought, that'd be great. And we had a lot of comment at our last meeting, and, and so at this time, I'll just open it up. If you have a comment, please indicate your desire to speak, and I will call on you. Is there anyone that would like to speak this evening on this matter?
Hello, yes, sir. Brian Bros.
Please state your address too, would you please?
Yes, sir. Brian Bros, I'm with, or at 17289 Joey Court. And, you know, I had spoke at the previous one as well, and my main comments does center around the, kind of the concerns in the email that I had sent out to others regarding the future redevelopment or the future realignment of the I-35 and Kenrick and County Road 50 intersection. And the reason I do bring this up is, you know, I know the city, as you looked in the budgeting and discussion earlier, as well as, you know, you, the, this plan has been adjusted for that future interchange, basically by the easement, I believe it's considered Outlet B. And the one thing that I have not seen on here is an overlay of the, the current plan along with that, the drawings that are out there for the future realignment. And when I looked at those two earlier, that's kind of where my, my concern came. Now, you know, but before I get too far ahead, I do want to say, we are thrilled, we are very appreciative with the council bringing up the concerns that the neighbors had. We are very grateful for all the work that the development team has done with and being willing to address these concerns. You know, however, I think our one thing, as we go through a certain item, or we address that, new ones are able to come into focus, and this is one that I just wanted to at least get on record as being concerned. With this new, this proposed redevelopment, that is years away, but, you know, in all reality, the city is planning for it. I believe they bought that Burger King plot for the exit ramp. They're looking at this project here due to the realignment for the, the easement with the Outlet B, I believe, on the, just south of Fleet Farm. So it is on your scope. Now, as we, as we look at this, the biggest thing I look at is, right now, there's plan for a major intersection in between Goodyear and the Animal Hospital. Now, you add that along with the road realignment, which actually increases kind of the blind spots in the S curve of that road, and stop that off with a, the apartment being there, it very much limits the city's ability to develop that intersection, to fix the, the problems that I think we all agree that this stretch of road definitely has its limitations. And as, you know, the future high-density developments go up to the north, and as ridership increases off of that park and ride, I think we can all agree that traffic's going to increase on that road, and this apartment without having the ability to possibly straighten or widen to increase capacity due to that apartment being there, is going to be one of these ones where we look back and go, wish we would have addressed this sooner.
Twenty seconds, Brian.
I realize that there's a lot of foresight and a lot of stuff that's been put into this. I would just like the city council to explore this a little bit more. And like I said, I appreciate everybody's efforts.
Thank you for your comments, Brian. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, hearing, no one else. Thank you, Brian, very much for your comments. Counsel, any further comments, questions for the? Council, any further comments, questions for the developer or staff regarding this I am not hearing any, so is there a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Move to approve four resolutions. One, adopting the twenty-twenty-one property tax level. Wait, hold, sorry. I got the whole wrong one.
Item nine. Item nine. We'll wait for you.
What happened there? Well, I'd like to read it, but it's not coming up now.
One of the privileges was, was this wasn't technically a public hearing, so we don't have to close.
No, correct. Thank you, Joshua.
Someone else would like to read it?
Councilmember Wheeler's having trouble bringing up the motion. Is there a motion, Joshua?
Move to approve a resolution approving the Eris Apartments preliminary and final plat, a resolution vacating public right-of-way and easements, a resolution establishing no parking along one hundred and seventy-third street, and a conditional use permit to allow a multiple-family use with a building height greater than forty-eight feet in the M one district, and adoption of the findings of fact.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Any further, any discussion, other questions? Hearing none. Shire, roll call, please.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Hellier.
No.
Lee.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The motion carries. Councilmember Hellier, you made your comment. Is there any further comment you'd like to make in terms of your position on this?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much. The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Knutson, for your comments and being available this evening and for the development team, and thank you to staff as well. Look forward to the project. What's the timing?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and council. So we're looking at sometime middle first quarter, we'd be underway, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item number ten, COVID-nineteen business resident support programs. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor and council. At your previous work session, you discussed if there was any additional programs that the council might want to look at in terms of business and resident support relating to COVID-nineteen, specifically the most recent shutdown and restrictions due to the recent increased numbers. At that work session, you did direct staff to do two things, which we approved tonight, which were the reduction in liquor license fees, as well as the modification to the outdoor patio policy. But the council wanted to bring it up again tonight. I believe part of the reasoning was we wanted to see if there was going to be any federal, state, or county actions that we might be able to either piggyback or partner with. So we do not have any formal recommendation or materials for you tonight. It was mainly on here, just so the council had an opportunity for a discussion.
Councilmember Hellier.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thanks for having Sunday Agenda again. I, I mean, if you read the news, the feds are gridlocked, the state was supposed to have a special session tomorrow that they're not having. God knows why they can't come to some agreement after last week's budget forecast. And I think you've seen the same communications I have from business owners who are probably up every night trying to think about how they're going to pay their rent this month or their mortgages. And so we need to figure out what we can do in the next short bit of time here to help. And I don't know what that looks like, and I hope we can have a conversation, and maybe it's, we move it more formally to our work session. I don't know how thick that agenda is, but, you know, in my mind, something that can help, fitness centers, right-of-way, very targeted support for small businesses, dance studios, gymnastics, those type of things, swim instruction, and then think about how we can support our restaurants also. I don't know, I mean, I'm not going to speculate what the legislature's doing. The governor's supposed to be announcing at the end of the week whether he's extending the stay-at-home or not. But I don't know how that plays into our thinking. But certainly, some sort of early support, at least, I think it should be discussed, so.
Thank you, Luke. I will just add that we had, Mr. Miller and I had a brief conversation this afternoon with a staff member with Congresswoman Craig's office, who indicated a bit of optimism about getting something done federally in the next week. I'm just sharing that, that's what she shared with us. I don't, I mean, I'm personally not quite as optimistic, but that's what she shared. So, councilmember Wheeler.
Are we gridlocked into conforming to what the state, you know, indicates for us to? You know, I was just in Missouri, and it's based off of counties there, you know? So the counties make their own decisions of shutting down, not shutting down, you know? A lot of these things are common sense things, you know, Luke just went over. You know, the restaurants being at, I mean, even if you put them at thirty percent occupancy and things like that, you know, can we lift restrictions in Lakeville itself and say, we're going to allow our restaurants to be at twenty-five percent, whatever that number is? You know, we're going to allow the fitness centers to be at twenty-five percent. Are we able to make those type of decisions?
No.
I'd like Andrea, as our city attorney, is there, is there opportunities for us to advance forward? And I know I'm putting you on the spot, but to advance forward a different way for us to implement things in the city? And what level of risk? At what level of risk?
So, at a basic level, and I apologize for the feedback, you cannot do less than what the governor's order provides. Whether or not you can do something different that don't meet the governor's requirements, that's something we have to look into.
I think councilmember Wheeler is bringing up that question, is what? And I don't know what the cost associated with looking into this would be for us, but I think that's the question he's bringing up. Is it not, Brian?
Yeah.
So, and short of the governor deciding that we're going to do this regionally or by county, like the school districts have been handled, what, what actions could we take, at what level of risk? I'm not sure why there's so much feedback, but.
Andrea, if you could mute when you're not talking, I think the feedback's coming through yours.
Yeah, I think so, too. Yes, I mean, I think to the extent that you want to do something different than the governor's order, that's less than the governor's order, you cannot do that. But if there's some areas you want to look into, we could certainly look into that. I just don't know what that would be at this time.
And I think a key piece of the question is, I'm sorry, Brian, you're muted, but I, I think a key question is at what risk? What, at what consequence?
If you're going to do something less than the governor's order, I think that you will have the AG sans answer, bringing some semblance of legal action against the city to mandate and force.
So maybe this is a, I'm going to step back to what councilmember Hellier said, that maybe we can come back to this in our agenda next week. I know we have legislators joining us for a conversation in terms of priorities, but maybe after we have the legislative conversation, we could have this agenda item. Mr. Miller, and at that point, we may know more in terms of, we may not know anything more, or we may know more in terms of the state and federal situation. I would also appreciate an update on the county, because I don't, I'm not up to date in terms of any county discussions about additional business support. And we could do some, we could do some inquiries and find out some response to that as well. And at the same time, maybe we, I'd be happy to have an offline, offline conversation with Mr. Miller and our city attorney just about this question that Brian raised, and see if we could just frame it up a little bit that we could bring back next week.
Sure. Mayor and council, you do have a work session next week, and that work session, timely enough, will have our legislative delegation there. And so this will be an opportunity that we could, if something hasn't been done at the state by that time, we could certainly lobby our legislators that this is something that's important. And right now, it is number one topic on your legislative agenda for next year, in that it's business for, assistance to small business impacted by the pandemic is certainly one of the priorities that's on that list that we're going to be sharing with them. But we can certainly keep this as a separate item on your work session for more detailed discussion as well.
That would be great. Mr. Miller, Michelle.
So, Justin, in regards to the emails that we got on, and this, it still has to do with our businesses, because the restaurants had a, or a restaurant had a peaceful protest. And, and of course, some people weren't very happy about the protest. And so, can, you know, I guess what I'm asking you is if you can just at least describe the parameters of a peaceful protest and really what involvement does the city have in that?
Well, the city doesn't have any involvement. We did not approve any protests. We don't get in the process or the business of doing that. We did know about it, and we were around to make sure that it did not get out of hand, this particular one. I think the definition of peaceful is probably in the eye of the beholder. And one person's peaceful is probably, it might not be for the next person, but our job is to protect public safety in that regard, and that's what our police department did, and that's what we would continue to do.
And so my second question, I'm sorry, Mayor, may I ask a second question?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
So, so I'm not trying to encourage anarchy, but, you know, what exactly are we going to do if a business goes against the governor's orders?
Mayor and council, I think that would be a discussion that we would need to have specifically with the police department. And I don't know if I'm prepared to answer that tonight.
And please, I apologize, because I did put you on the spot. It's just something this conversation brought forward to my head as we were talking and thinking about what's happening in our community and the pain that our businesses are feeling at this point. So, thank you.
I would just, I would comment on that, that I, my perspective is that I think, and I think we as a city council have lived this out since the pandemic started in March, is that we are working hard to be encouragers and supporters of a balanced approach in terms of public health and the future success of our city, the economic viability of our businesses. And in that context, for me personally, I, I don't have a lot of desire to be punitive in nature to support that. I would much prefer to be encouraging and guiding in our work. We, this peaceful protest that was at a restaurant, it's not the only peaceful protest that's happened in our city. There has been a lot of peaceful protests that have gone on since, particularly since June. And I think that free speech is, under our, under our belief in free speech, like Mr. Miller said, our approach has been to ensure public safety. And we press on. That's just my feelings that I'm sharing. Councilmember Hellier.
Hi, Mayor, thanks. I'd just like to remind everybody, the last discussion we had about this in the spring, that the process would be that if someone complained, that we would send a letter and ask over a certain amount of time for the business to come in compliance. I would assume that that's still our process. So to your point, Mayor, I would say that we're not going to be arresting business
Good to remind ourselves of the process decision that we made. Thank you. Joshua.
Coming back to our discussion about supporting businesses and our working session next week, I just want to put out there that at the moment, you know, the last federal aid, state aid, county aid, city aid, was all geared towards a $10,000 grant. In the conversations that I think we've all had, I'm not sure that that's going to cut it for the businesses specifically impacted by the latest mandates. And so I think we have to maybe look at, how do we complement what other agencies are providing in terms of funding and not necessarily waiting for them to take over that burden wholly? Because there's a few examples out there that I know that monthly expenses are twenty-plus thousand a month, and if they can't make those rents and utility payments, they won't exist next month. So these are things that we need to be able to provide cash for in the near term and not wait too much longer. So just wanted to make that point as we go into next week's meeting.
And just, sorry if I could follow up.
Yes, please, Luke.
You know, one thing that we had, I think we discussed in the last work session, that based on interactions we've had with gyms and restaurants, that their biggest need and concern is to how to support their employees that they're laying off. And so the businesses, I think, are struggling to make their bills, but how we can support them to support their workforce is really important to this, whatever we decide to
Thank you. Michelle.
So I guess we should really complement the Chamber Council, too, because they are making an effort to, let's say, fundraise for these employees of these industries for the holidays. So, you know, to make sure that they can have a Christmas and meals, et cetera. So, you know, it's kind of nice that we help the Chamber, and then in turn, they're going to turn around and help their businesses, too, and other businesses that are, you know, back on their feet, or able to help the ones that are having issues right now.
Thank you very much. I do just want to add, I mean, we do have a, we do have a public health matter that we are all living with in terms of the pandemic. And while there are some hopeful things on the horizon with vaccines, you know, there is actions that, that, that people that are health professionals that have encouraged us to do in terms of physical distancing and wearing a mask and limiting our, limiting our exposure time. And I think I just encourage all of us to continue to be wise and. And, and I think, I just encourage all of us to continue to be wise and take appropriate precautions as we do live through this, continue to live through the pandemic. And thank you for thanking the Chamber, Michelle. There's been a lot of work that's gone on, and I appreciate their work as well in encouraging people to shop locally and to support our local businesses in whatever way that people can. We will add this to our agenda for next week. Any further comments? Otherwise, Mr. Miller, would you like to move in to just a quick city operations update?
Sure, thank you, Mayor and Council. No big updates. City Hall does remain open. As the mayor, or as the chief mentioned during his presentation, the police department is remain closed, has remained closed to the public, our public works facilities, and our arts center and our heritage center remain closed, with the exception of some pickup items and some one-off type of things. But we, all of, all city services are still going forward. We continue to encourage people that if they do need something, to call, email, access us through the website. We are answering phones and handling things just like we normally would, and just trying to limit as much one-on-one interaction as possible. But other than that, that's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to items 12 and 13, unfinished business and new business for a council discussion. Anything for this evening, counsel? Okay, we'll move to announcements. Mr. Miller, any announcements?
Just for the public, because of the, the Christmas holidays, our schedule for meetings is a little bit different this month. We are having our normal city council work session, but that is next week, the second Monday, as opposed to the fourth Monday. And that will be held via Zoom, as opposed to Amazon Chime, and that, the way to access that will be available on the website and on the top of the agenda as well. And then we'll be having our final meeting of the year on the 21st.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, any announcements? I would just add a couple. One is the working group associated with the conversations on race is meeting this Wednesday evening as a follow-up to the last conversation, and also considering the planning for the second conversation in the series of three. And tentatively, they are looking at scheduling that on Dr. Martin Luther King Day in the morning, and it would be a virtual conversation just as the first one. And then as Mr. Miller mentioned, next week is our council work session for the month of December. We're looking forward to that. We've already referred to the fact that we'll be speaking with our legislators and talking about our priorities, and then have continued conversation in terms of support for the pandemic. And then our, our final meeting of the month is Monday night, the 21st. That'll be our regular council meeting, our second regular council meeting for the month, on Monday night, December 21st. If there are no other announcements, is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to adjourn. Sharr, roll call, please.
Anderson?
Aye.
Hellier?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Have a good rest of the evening. Good night.
Good night.